Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke, and I'd like to welcome you to this City Council special meeting of the City of Durango City Council. Tonight's, maybe we have a roll call, please, to get this meeting started.
Certainly. Councillor Bettin?
Here.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Present.
Councillor Youssef?
Right here.
Mayor Tim Baxter?
Present.
And Mayor Brooke?
Here. Thank you very much, Amy. Tonight's agenda item is a discussion and possible action concerning a resolution submitting to the registered electors of the city, a ballot issue entitled concerning an increase in the city's lodgers tax. As advertised, there is no, this is not a public hearing, therefore, we do not have a public comment involved with this meeting this evening. We do have a number of attendees that we're happy to have watching this action this evening. But I might ask the city attorney for just a clarification on what your expectation is relative to possible action. Tonight's discussion would result in a, an actual vote, roll call vote for the action, or whether you're looking for direction to create the final resolution to be voted on next week in a regular city council meeting?
That's the latter, really. I think it's up to council. I suppose if you were able to get to a set of language tonight that everyone's comfortable with, you could, because the way it's agendaized, excuse me, take action. But I think it's preferable to, if staff can get, you know, final input, we can draft something to have for you to review along with an amended ordinance, because the ordinance is up for, here, there's two, there's two things going on. One is the resolution to set the ballot language. The other item is the, excuse me, the ordinance that makes changes to the city code. So both of those will need to be changed, depending on what comes out of tonight. So I guess my suggestion would be just to make sure that we're clear on what you're voting on, that we would be able to come up with a clean draft of a document that you see prior to our next Tuesday night's meeting, and then you would have something to vote on in terms of the resolution. We would do a hearing on the ordinance, a little bit different topics in the ordinance, but be happy to answer questions about that if you want to. Then the vote on the, first reading on the ordinance would be, you know, two weeks after that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. I appreciate your counsel on that. And that was my expectation. I just want to make sure it was, I was understanding the purpose of tonight's meeting beyond the discussion. With that, I think the format of tonight's meeting would be a fairly general conversation, and I'd like to go around each councillor and address, well, I first acknowledge that we do have a response from the DALLA organization as to they reconvened subsequent to our last meeting and gave us some other recommend, an update on their recommended action and what they would be accepting moving forward, as well as an update from Bill Carver clarifying some of the percentages as, and how they were represented. So I wanted to acknowledge those two pieces of information the council was expecting, and, and thank you so much for those folks that participated and responded to council. With that, we have one bit of information relative to our transit program that perhaps I can impose on our city manager to just brief us as to any shortcomings that we might be having in the next budget year, as well as moving forward relative to our transit program and CDOT's funding or lack of moving forward. So if, Jose, if you could brief us on that, and then we will begin our debate, and I'll probably ask Chris to start us off, and then kind of go in, in a rotation amongst our councillors after that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Later in the week, there was a question asked by the city council, Councillor Noseworthy, that had come, I believe, from the Multimodal Advisory Board in regards to the funding of the transit services, specifically with our 5311 funds. We are on a step down, if you will, from funding from CDOT to the 5311 funds. So the, when we look at the, what we would call the impact really hits us in 2023, where we then go down to annual revenue funding from the 5311 to $413,000. This year, we're at $811,000. So it is a significant down step, if you will, in regards to the funding that we were receiving. Historical knowledge, I believe, was that this was something that was supposed to have happened, but we're able to work out an agreement to where it was going to be done over time instead of all in one year. So we have been, like in 2021, we're expecting $811,000. This year, next year, it'll go to $787,000, and then in 2023, it'll stay at $413,000. The question was raised, what would happen with our transit services if it stayed with the same amount of funding that we were getting from the lodgers tax transferion in to the transit fund? And we would restart seeing a substantial deficit of around $450,000 average a year, starting in 2023, and then all the way out till 2030, if this was going through without a change in revenue, whether it be through an increase in the lodgers tax portion coming in, whether it be without an increase in federal funding, which is not imminent, but might be a possibility, or changing our parking revenue. Without any of those things, we would have to look at the possibility of modifying our service routes and see what options might be available in doing that. The question was asked just in regards to what would need to be that percentage of the lodgers tax to continue to maintain the services that we're providing today if we were to move forward. And the analysis showed that a, of the five, of whatever percent, I believe, there's a 5% to 5.2% that the council was discussing, that 1.5% of that 5.2 would enable the transit funding to continue to go through and provide the services that it is providing today for the next, for the next 30 years, as long as the, the tax is available.
If I may, there was also a question of the multimodal. What routes were eliminated most recently, and the funds to reinstate them? In particular, Mercy, Three Springs was asked by the Multimodal Board, but I understand there are other routes that, because of funding constraints, were eliminated. So I think you've given us that number, but I want to make certain we're all in agree, understanding what, the 1.5 would support current operations possibly, but that doesn't get us back to where we were.
Yes, Councillor Noseworthy, I believe in 2018, there was a reduction of, of a few routes, Mercy, Three Springs, and there may have been Crestview, might have been the other route. To go back to that level in 2018, we would look at probably an additional $500,000 in operating expenses is what it would take to bring that back up annually. And then we would have some capital expenditures that we would have to procure. But the operational side to bring those routes back in was estimated around $500,000 a year.
Great. Thanks. Thanks so much. So to start off, anybody want to take the first pass, or relative to synopsis of what any particular individual councillor would be supportive of, given our conversations to date?
Sure. I'm happy to go forward.
All righty.
First of all, Jose and team, thank you for giving us this stark, real, probably realistic and necessary analysis. I'm thinking it's, to make good policy decisions, we have to have the information and the forecast, as difficult as it may be to address. So I want to be real clear. I am supportive of the lodgers tax increase. I also am extremely concerned about our transportation system. This is an issue of equitably, equitable services and inclusive services and geographic services. And I also believe that we recognize we have structural challenges with our budget, and this is an example of it. You know, we were relying on outside funding, and we, I have said all along that transportation as a minimum is essential. I didn't know how much was needed to actually address this. So at 1.5, we would do what we are doing right now. At another 500, which is less than three, which is more than a three quarters percent, that would add up to about $400,000, we might get back to what we were doing. I'd like to see us be able to work with the hotel years to devise a system that actually encourages our tourists to use it. So I'm willing to support a 3% increase, or 3% of a 5.25, I would support 3% for marketing of Durango, and 2.25 to address our transportation issues for this community, which would get us up to almost being able to reinstate what had been eliminated a few years ago.
Barbara, if I could ask, so that's 3%, of 5.25.
And 2.25 for transportation. Does that mean I don't support the arts? I've always said all along, I believe that we need to take care of basic, essential services. And now, when I see the shortfall for transportation, it makes it clear to me the position I'd like, I plan to take.
So there was also a topic of an impact fund. So I assume that that also is zero for impact fund?
Yeah, I believe it would be easiest just to communicate to the, to the public that this is for our public transportation system. We need to find a sustainable way to maintain it, to ideally at least bring back transportation to Three Springs, Mercy, and if not other routes, and to address all the other issues where you're going to be facing, trying to get more people using the transit services, possibly electric vehicles, and working with the hotel years.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Any other thoughts in next, next round, or? Should I, if not, I can respond, but I was hopeful of getting other councillors' thoughts on not only the total, which has been suggested by DALLA to be a 5.25% overall acceptable amount, but I, for one, will have a discussion about the need to support the arts and the need to support a, an impact fund, whatever that might be, considering that there will be, this is not intended to fund, be the sole source of funding for transit, and that there will be, needs to remain an exercise on the part of the city to look for additional grants and, and other sources of income for transit as well. Certainly, this was intended to address transit, but not be the sole source of transit. With that, if there's no volunteers, I'll start calling on folks. I think, Chris, with the, in relative to expediency, I know you had some thoughts previously stated in support of generally the proposal that was issued by DALLA. Do you have any thoughts about the updated suggestion by DALLA?
Yeah, and I can be brief, and the reason I didn't jump up is because my position hasn't changed. And we've had multiple sessions to discuss this, and through those sessions, my position, position hasn't changed. And it was that you've got three disparate groups working together, making lots of concessions to bring to us something that is coherent and relative to the needs of the community. I would just note, in the, in the transit issues, I think if we utilize the same methodology of breaking it down that we have been working with over the last several meetings, that there, there is substantial transit funding in there. And if the council's wisdom would choose to use the more nebulous line item, Tourism Impact Fund, for transit purposes, it would have that ability to do that. And I too agree with Councillor Noseworthy that if you want to fund transit out of that, then just say it's transit. You know, the breakdown for me is, is roughly the same. I think the last time we were here in this meeting, there was a, really, the substantive debate where we didn't have a majority consensus was whether we were going to go from a total of 5% to add another quarter percent. I, given the feedback we've received from the various groups, would be comfortable at the 5.25. I, of all the things we received, particularly liked the breakdown that Mr. Carver sent in, because it's a concession, once again, from all interested parties relative to this issue. And that breakdown is, marketing is 55%. Transit is 18% of the total. Tourism impact is 13%. And arts and culture are 14% in his breakdown. I'm comfortable with that. The groups have worked hard together to get to that, and, and I would love to move forward with ballot language that could support that. I would just note to you, as somebody who is in the lodging business and have been my entire adult life, and many would say even before that, that the idea that the hospitality folks, the lodging folks can impact the use of transit in our community in a substantive way does not seem reasonable to me. I think they have some impacts, they get some use out of our transit system, certainly to some tours, and I would say a very small percentage benefit from it. But I think we should be honest with the public and say that the people that we're really trying to support here, that need our transit, are the 30% of our residents that are regular users, because there's a need in the community for transit. And we're trying to fund that as a impact of tourism that can be positive in the community. We're giving marketing dollars to promote one of the foundational economic realities in our community. And let's not also state that the idea is to bring more tourists, the idea is to create more stability in that economy by stretching out its impacts into off-season periods where jobs are scarce in that particular economy, because people are more scarce in our community in the Septembers, Octobers, Novembers, April, and May. And so it's a very important economy in our community, and the idea to stretch out into those off-seasons and create more stability in that economy, I think should be desirable as a whole for all of the tax impacts it has, sales tax, funding our general fund, all of the spending that it implies, not just from the tours, but from the employees, from the people that it employs within our community, and all of the multiplier impacts that has. So, you know, I'm all for funding transit out of this at the, at the levels that I just stated, but I think we need to be clear about what we're doing there. And it is that we know when we cut those transit routes, the who the people were that were concerned about that. It weren't the lodging folks, it weren't the tourists, they were the people who needed it. And I think we do need to fund it. And if we decide to use that Tourism Impact Fund as componentry to that, I am more than happy to do that within the balance of what I just stated.
Thank you, Chris. And just for, for the record, I'm in general agreement with exactly those terms as well, and that be the terms that were documented, memorialized in a memorandum from Bill Carver as well. And again, those percentages were exactly what Chris just stated, is would be what I would be supportive of at this point in the conversation. So with that, Melissa or Kim, did you have anyone to weigh in on any thoughts? Or anything?
Happy to go. I know, Kim's, we're all still kind of digesting this transformation, or transportation information, which makes it difficult to have received it so late. But I think that I would suggest, suggest that I'm in agreement that, on the importance of transit, I mean, I, you know, recognize the importance of this vitally important social service, and that the, you know, it improves the quality of life for everyone. And I'm seeing these budget shortfalls that works are expected from 2023 on. It's pretty illuminating, and that, for me, does make me agree. You know, I think in, in some instances with what, what Barbara was suggesting, which is that I, I'm kind, I'm, I'm interested in what I'm kind of, I'm hearing a little bit of a common theme, that perhaps it should just be combined into a percentage for transit and added together. And so if we were taking the, the spreadsheet that unfortunately, we're speaking to, that the rest of the attendees may not have access to, is a spreadsheet created by Bill Carver that provided for a tad bit of compromise for each party, such that we can still keep our lodgers tax at 5.25, but it brought everybody, every, each party down just a little bit. In this case, it brought the transit and, and also what was being referred to as the Tourism Impact Fund down to a combined rate of 31%. And I would just combine those and make it 31% to Durango Transit. And that would be, allow us to maintain what we have into the future, and then we could hopefully find other supplemental sources to bring back the Mercy and Crestview loops. The thing that I, you know, recall talking about when we had to make these cuts back in 2018, which was a really difficult time, when we saw that we were going to get reduced state funding, was that, you know, some of the things that were, were sticking out to me, and they, they did this passenger survey, is that 73% of the riders used, that they did use Durango Transit, used it on a daily basis. 76% were transit dependent. 67% came from low-income households, making less than $25,000 a year. And it just, for me, it really highlighted the importance of the really, the need, the need for this. So I could see combining Durango Transit, making it 21, 31%, having sustainable marketing be 55%, because I do appreciate the goal of spreading out the tourism, like Councillor Bettin was suggesting. The goal is not to increase tourism in the summer months, the goal is to spread it out and to have, to try to level the seasonality effects that we're experiencing. And I am in support of supporting the arts and culture industry. I believe we were calling it the, the Culture Fund, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we were titling it, but I am in favor of supporting that. I see the long-term benefits to the community of diversifying our economy. I see the benefits of folk, of quality of life for our, our residents who live here of supporting that economy, whatever that might look like going forward. And I see great value in supporting the arts and culture in Durango, and having it be a more sustainable and equitable, you know, trying to balance it with our, some of the other outdoor amenities. So I'm a fan of continuing to support that as well at 13%. I believe it was reduced to 13, no, it was 14%, reduced to 14% from 15%. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. And I might just take this one period to clarify for those attendees that do not have the spreadsheet in front of them, just what we're talking about with these percentages. And the document that we're looking at has marketing at 55%. Now, what that is, 55% of the total tax, whatever revenue amount that the 5.25% total lodgers tax would create. And so whatever that is, would be 50%, 5% of that would be dedicated to marketing. 18% would have, was dedicated, suggested to be dedicated to transit. 14% dedicated to the Arts and Culture Fund, and 13% being that amount for a city Tourism Impact Fund that would be sort of a flexible account that would be for special projects, for instance, has been discussed, or transit as needed, as has been suggested in combination with the dedicated transit amount. That's where Councillor Youssef was coming up with 31%, combining 18% with the 13% Impact Fund. And, but that would leave 14% for the arts, and for those marketing folks, tourism marketing folks, clearly 55% would be, in this scenario, dedicated to tourism marketing. And with that, we'll move on to Councillor Baxter.
So I just, I just want to say, Dean, based upon the average that we've been using over history time, without, not including 2020 for COVID, essentially, that's the 31% for transit is about $790,000 approximately. The 14% for the cultural is about $360,000, and these are all per year. And the 55% for marketing is about $1.4 million, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, which is approximately twice what they're being given, provided at this point. So that's a significant 100% of roughly increase in marketing over what's being spent right, right now. So, Kim, I might ask you for number, you know, we're gaining consensus, number one, on the total tax to be requested, and gain your thoughts on the 5.25 total lodgers tax being proposed, and generally concurred in by the DALLA group. If you're supportive of that, and then any of the specifics that you've got evaluated in your mind?
Yeah, so those calculations, by the way, were off of 5% tax, so they'd all increase a little bit, just FYI. Yeah, I really appreciate what everyone has said and how we're kind of focusing on this. I, I too like the idea, and I didn't, I don't like the name Tourism Benefit Fund or Impact Fund, because I, I think people would misunderstand that that was to be used for more ways of promoting tourism. So I like the idea of combining the transit, transportation, excuse me, percentage with that fund, the other fund. Oh, I'm sorry. And I think a doubling of marketing dollars is a pretty good increase, particularly since they have the opportunity with that money to impact their future revenues by increasing our, our tourism in the proper months, so that it's on the shoulder seasons and in the winter, and spreading it out, by increasing their own revenue and their own budgets by doing that well. I think that's a great idea. And one of the things that I think was mentioned in Bill's letter, I'm certain, but, you know, the county also contributes sales tax, or contribute, those dollars contributed to visit Durango from the county, which hasn't been included in any of our calculations. So I just want to point that out. And I, I support the cultural, cultural funding for arts and culture. You know, it was interesting, I just briefly looked over the comp plan and the arts and culture section in the comp plan. And I was actually on the comp plan development team, and it was really, really important that the, to everyone involved, that we have a special section on arts and culture. And in the conversations, one of, they set aside a different team to work on that, that wasn't part of the bigger group. But the bigger group had talked about the idea that one of our aspects of our culture was outdoor recreation. And I don't mean in the sense of providing the trails, or providing the land, or providing the river trail, or that. What I mean is in the sense of events happening here, and that that's part of our culture, is having those outdoor recreation events happen here, just like having arts events happen here, just like having any of these other events that we're talking about. And just reading the, the section on it, I realized that that was completely omitted by the small group that was composed entirely of arts and culture people. It was completely omitted from the comp plan. And it had been the bigger group's concept of culture. So I'm, I originally thought that my support for the arts and cultural funding would include some events for outdoor recreation, and I'm concerned now that they won't. I just had the chance, just briefly, to look at that, and also trying to look at the transportation numbers. This has been challenging. So I don't know how, I don't know, the 360,000, I don't know if that's too low or too high. If it included provisions for encompassing all of our culture, which also includes outdoor recreation, then I would probably be inclined to support that. But otherwise, I, I'm not comfortable with that, because I know that the bigger group, not the specialized group, but the bigger group really wanted that included in the comp plan. Because I know that the bigger group, not the specialized group, but the bigger group really wanted that included in the comp plan.
So how, how does that relate to the percentages that you would be supportive of? So let's start with the 5.25% and gain consensus on that. And, and Kim, I'll ask you for your thoughts on that. And then, and then with respecting what you just said, what, what particular area that you are, you would be dissatisfied in?
Yeah, so the, I like doing percentages rather than the number of the, of the tax, it just makes more sense to me. So the 31% concept with the transportation. I'm okay with that at 789,000 with one exception. The marketing at 55 seems high to me, but I can support it. The cultural, if we're not including outdoor recreation events, then I would take some percentage. So the 55% of marketing's okay. The 14% cultural, if it's not supporting outdoor recreation events, that seems high to me and I would move some of that into transportation.
Excellent, so. And, and you are supportive of the 5.25 overall?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not attached to whether it's five or 5.25 particularly. You know, I'd rather have transportation supported as much as possible, so 5.25 is fine.
Okay, well, I think we've reached, Dirk, if you're taking notes, we have arrived at consensus on the 5.25, I believe. And so that's good thing, number one, good. I am, I think Chris, Melissa and myself are in agreement with the overall percentages of the 55 for marketing, 18 for transit, 14 for arts and 13 for the impact fee. With nuance, I'm the only one still holding out for an impact fee, if you will. And I'm totally supportive of what has been suggested that they be utilized effectively as a 31% potentially a year that we need 31% for transit, great. But I'd want, just in the, what Counselor Baxter just described, a special event comes to town, we want to support a bicycle, a bicycle event or something. We had the, the Ride the Rockies through, through our town, needed a check a few years ago. That kind of a thing would come out of a Tourism Impact Fund in my mind. And, and so I was hopeful of having a little bit of a flexible account to be able to respond to those kinds of needs in the future. But, but knowing this year, just as everybody stated in this new focus on transit deficit, which has always been there, that, you know, on, on most years, we could dedicate the entire 31% to that. But it would give future councils and staff of flexibility in utilization of at least a portion of that. And that's why I like the 18% described as transit solely, along with the idea of having this more flexible account. I apologize if it's not, if it would be a difficult sell to the public because of its complexity, but I don't, you know, I, I think it does allow for a lot of things that the public would support, such as a bicycle rally or a special musical event or a special recreational event that would come to our community that needs quick funding and allows staff to be nimble and future councils to be nimble with the, with the very smallest 13% of this total picture. And that's, but if it's, if we have consensus, I think we've got two, two counselors suggesting the combination of 31% as, as a methodology to, for ballot language. Then I could be supportive of that, but Kim, yeah, second round.
I just, I think, I think you, I, I like what you're saying, Dean. I think it's really interesting in the sense that it could, it could be useful. I, I do want to say that I, I don't like the title that you're using because the public is going to see that as more tourism support rather than core and essential services being provided by those dollars. So if we were going to do that, if, and I, and I don't think that 18% is enough to transit because that's only about $475,000 and that barely makes us whole. So if we were doing 20, 22% and then either eight or 10 for the core services funding, I, I would agree that, I'm comfortable with breaking that out.
Melissa?
You know what, I am too, actually, the way you've kind of suggested that, Dean. And it does make sense and I want to suggest that Kim's brought up a really good point about the funding of events because that had, that was in the original 2%, our original tax. And so we've excluded it in this analysis. So I think it is a good idea to put that, have that go back in as a possibility for future councils to consider under the essential services. Is that what you're calling it, Kim? Essential?
Well, so I would, I would suggest that the core essential services funding is not actually for events. It is for those things that are impacted by tourism. So that would be for fire, police, those kind of things. I don't, I think the events needs to come out of the cultural funding because that's what culture, they have cultural events. So I think, I think back to our original discussion of having something that helps offset impacts. So it's core and essential services or transportation, marketing or culture. So it could be, go to any of the three that were included, but its main purpose is core and essential services.
I just wanted to point out that the language in the resolution is drafted, just as a reminder, says the original language was, it was 20% at that time for any of the above purposes, which was marketing, transportation and arts and cultural. So it would be for any of those purposes or other purposes related to the impacts of tourism as council may determine. So it's not really, it wasn't describing a fund as much as it was expenditures for purposes related to the impacts of tourism. What that were.
Okay, okay.
And so it, yeah, the semantics maybe get diluted in that, in that format, in the actual ballot language. And so it, it does leave it to to the city to appropriate. The question is, what fund does it go into in actuality, General Fund or how does it become accounted for? So it may have.
I can, I can speak to that as well, at least as the, as the ordinance is drafted now. The, the funds collected from the lodgers tax would go into one special fund. And then council would, as part of the budget process, determine how that's going to be expended on an annual basis. So it's really left up to council and that's again, something we haven't really got into that detail. But that's sort of the way the language is working in that ordinance, which we can talk about. So, and again, that's a detail that you, you know, that you can still work out in terms of exactly how that happens.
And, and Dirk, just to, just to refer, go through those again. It could be used for marketing, for tourism marketing, if there was a special push for marketing that year. Or it could be used solely for transit. Or it could be used for any of the other impacts that you enumerated there. So.
As it's currently drafted, that's, that's the case, yes.
So, so I think our next discussion involves, I, I think we're honing in on, you know, these percentages and whether 18% for transit should be a standalone. Or if we need to come, increase transit and reduce that particular fund, we'll, for the moment, we'll call it impact, but not tourism impact, but just the impact percentage.
If we're going to look at 18% for transit and we have a cliff of 2023 that will put us at $450,000 in the hole, I'd like to know what that 18% is going to do for keeping us at a sustainable system. Would that even meet our needs?
22%, 22% would be about 570,000 approximately, I'm just, you know.
Yes, but, but they were already counting on, in Jose's spreadsheet, he was already counting on 0.32% already going in there. And even with that, we were at a $450,000 deficit by 2023. And that was, that added in a point, it looks like 0.32%. So I guess I'm eager to secure from Jose. What an 18% of this thing. I don't know if you have your calculator, but I'm not even certain at 18% we're going to be meeting our requirements to maintain what we have right now when we hit this cliff in 2023.
That's why I said if we bumped it up to 22%, we'd be probably at about, actually more like probably $580,000. So what is that deficit? Not in dollars, not, so what is the?
$453,000 in, that's over and beyond a 0.32% allocation.
So the 0.32% is how much money? How many dollars?
So if I could kind of just explain that, 0.32% is of the current 2% lodgers tax. So if we go to 5.25% and you did 0.32%, it would increase automatically. But if we're looking at the 18% that council is talking about, would be 504,000.
Yeah, so it would cover the deficit.
No, the spreadsheet says at the 0.32% in 2023, at that percentage, we would have $341,486 going in. But we would have a deficit of 463,000 over and beyond. So we're still going to be at a deficit, even if you bumped it up to the 500, you're, we're, we're budgeting the spreadsheet 341 going in. If you go up another 160,000, then you're at a $300,000 deficit just to maintain what we have.
So you're saying we need about $775,000 or something? That's what I'm asking. What's the total that you're saying we need?
What Jose showed us is that at 1.5%, we can break even, may, maybe with our current programs, that 1.5% of the, of the five, of, of the fund. That maybe allows us to break even. It doesn't allow us to add any routes. And just recently, we talked about housing and about housing for workforce housing and people who need to take public transit. So my point is, with all this maneuvering from people who outside of the institution, who haven't looked at the numbers of what we're going to face in 2023, a shortfall. And I'll let it be here now, we all know we're looking at $450,000 deficit and we need a minimum of 1.5% of this fund to break even with what we're currently doing.
I, I'd like to make a comment just to remind of counselors, as well as the 30 attendees that are, are hopefully supporting this tax is that this was never envisioned to be the be all, end all for transportation. This was meant to, this lodgers tax was not ever designed or anticipated to be to fulfill the entire obligation of the transit fund, never. It was an obligation, however, it was always envisioned when we created the, the cultural district, that that would be supported by a future lodgers tax. And so that's why I think it's, we need to focus on the, the arts aspect of this because that was, when it, that entity, when it was created, was intended to be supported by this particular fund. Transit should be supported because it is an impact as has been stated and to some degree of our, and supportive of our tourist economy. But this is by no means the sole source of funding for our transit system.
I understand that.
We need to look at, we, excuse me, we need to look at long-term, sustainable sources for income for, to sustain our transit system, period. And without it, the transit system, as you suggest, will not exist. And I, 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 but I don't think we can look to this to be the be all, end all for transit.
And I just would suggest that this has been a known problem for some time and I haven't heard any, any options for addressing it, other than we need to find funding. And I, I would propose that here is a possible solution to that. That the hoteliers have been supportive of including transportation.
And, and, and we, we have and we've got, it's been proposed at a level of 18%. Chris, go ahead.
I, I, I'm not even sure what we're actually arguing about at this point. I think it, I think the solution is actually on the table. It's either in the semantics of the way Mayor Brooke is describing it or in the alternative of actually funding transit directly, the way that Counselor Nosworth is describing it. And, and I would just like, since I haven't had a chance to respond to the mayor's comments, I, I agree, I think the, I think the flexibility. I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with committing all of those dollars to transit straight up. But I think this is a public session. This is recorded, these minutes go in the record and future councils need to look back, what was the intent of those funds? We're clearly stating that should transit be needed to be funded out of this impact fee, that we intend for it to be funded, if that's necessary. And I kind of like the way you described it, Mayor, where you said, look, you know, some years we may not need that, there may be other solutions. Counselor Nosworth, they alluded to the structural issues that we have that still have to be solved. It's a greater, greater project for sure than this is. And so I just like the way you stated that and I, I would support it. And, but we're clearly stating that there are enough funds between those two funds to support transit as it stands, if it's necessary.
Thank, thank you, Chris. And I might also say that that flexibility would also support, hang on one second, Kim, would also support the arts, if there was a, a special initiative of the arts, whether that was a study for an event center or something of that nature, that any of these categories needed to be, have a little cash injection in, in any particular year that council decided was important, that could be funded out of that. But this year might be all 31% goes to transit. Another year might be a little more, a couple more percentage points go to arts and culture if they've got a big thing going. Another year might be a push on additional tourism marketing. That would be the way I had envisioned it, but Kim, yeah, your thoughts?
So, so I'm listening to the numbers we're talking about and I'm listening to the conversations. So first I want to say that I think that, I, I think you're right, Dean, the flexibility and also Chris and everybody else who's talked about it. The flexibility is really good. And to Counselor Nosworth's point, if indeed we had to stop transportation from falling off a cliff, we would be able to do so. However, you know, somewhere down the line here, transportation is going to change significantly and it's going to be in the next five to 10 years with, between autonomous driving or and, and, and on-demand reaction by transportation to people who need it at a certain time in a certain place. There's going to be major changes here. So I don't know whether or not the way we're looking at transportation currently is the future and I don't believe it is. So I think this allows variability for that, for that possibility. So and I'm, I, so I would just listening to the percentages, so I'm, I'm going to kind of make a proposal here and I'm not going to make it a motion, but I'm going to make a proposal. 55% to marketing, 20% to transportation, 14% to cultural and 11% to impact. And that, that gives us that capability of moving that 11% around to help whatever categories might needed or where we want more emphasis. And so that's, that's, I can absolutely support that.
You said 14% to the cultural, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It was 14%, I think that was what Melissa had said, the, the letter was, had recommended.
Yeah, thank you. And I just would state that I, I want to just agree with one of your points there relative to the future of transit. I mean, Dean and I attended a session at, at the state a couple of years ago and everything that you just said was the focus of where transit was going, you know, that it was going to change. It was going to be more responsive, it was going to be more autonomous. And, and I think you're right. And I think to, to hamstrung ourselves into, you know, a, a larger fund would not be paying attention to that. And, and I just wanted to say also that I support your breakdown of those percentages as well. So I'm, I'm okay with, because of the fungibility, the one, that's fine with me if you want to give a little more to transit.
Great, thank you.
If I might, Melissa, hang on just one second, if you might, you know, to follow up on that, that discussion of transit. Absolutely, I think we are, just as has been stated, up for it. An evolution of transit that takes away the And an evolution of transit that takes away the, the idea of reestablishing transit routes and that kind of thing. I think we are so close and well-postured actually as a community to take on the new technology of, of transit systems, whether that be autonomous door-to-door modules or whatever. You know, this was a discussion that City Manager and I were having Monday in terms of my vision of, of posturing, another city council posturing for available grants to accept this technology in a community of the scale of Durango on the western slope. I think we are primed for any new CDOC grants for exploring new, new technologies in, in transit. Whether that's, you know, in whatever form that brings. And that's, I think, you know, our, our next three to five years is just to sustain our transit system and, and create a usership that is around so that we can implement new technologies. And, and I, I believe fully that, I'm hopeful that there will be money available for that when it, from the state and federal agencies, when, when we're ready for it. So I, I too support what Kim has said in terms of a reduction or an increase of transit from the proposed 18% to 20% and a reduction of the impact fund from 13 to 11. And that's a, it's a good compromise, still allows enough flexibility, I believe. And, and moves us a little bit forward on this, on this thing. And I think that's salable to the public. And Melissa was up next, and then we have Counselor Baxter. And then if there's a motion, we can.
I also have a comment.
Nowsworthy, yeah. Kim, go, Melissa, go right ahead.
Okay, thanks. I, I won't, a lot of time reiterating what was already said, but I just wanted to suggest that I am also in support of where this conversation is headed and the breakdowns that Mayor Pro Tim Baxter just suggested. I think that, that we're getting closer to consensus. And I think it's going to be, and then once, I just reiterate to all of us that once we, once we as a council provide direction and then have the hearing on the second and, and formalize the motion, then, then it's ultimately up to the citizens to decide. I don't know who that was, it wasn't me. Was that?
That was my tell, that was my media system just came alive. Sorry for that interruption and I'll, I'll mute out. But sorry, apologize for that interruption and we're off to Counselor Nowsworthy for a final comment.
So I will just suggest that at every, this is based on, I think it's the 500. Every 0.25% increase is $133,000. So, you know, you're looking at $400,000 going into a cultural fund that may or may not include outdoor recreation, that doesn't really have a definition yet for it. And I'll come back with, why wouldn't you consider a reduced amount for this cultural fund and put a more, another increase into the impact fund, which as we've all stated, allows for flexibility? Why tie the hands to over 400, possibly $500,000 a year in perpetuity? When we know we have structural problems that need to be addressed? We don't know what's going to come up with a police, anything. So why tie up so much when you could tie up a little less and still have the flexibility?
Duly noted. Is there, we can, I, I think we have relative consensus on, on a, on a few issues. And if it was supported to a level that we would want to take a motion and, and we are, we do have the opportunity to vote on this this evening or we can simply give direction to the city attorney and then have a final vote on, on next Tuesday. But I would entertain a motion if, if there was a motion regarding our conversation this evening that might gain consensus to pass on. And then we would simply be voting on the final ordinance as opposed to any further discussion next week.
Yeah, and I, I might suggest you, your motion, again, it would be nice to be able to draft the language. You'd be able to see it before we actually vote on it in terms of the resolution. So if I could suggest a motion, just a motion, you know, to, to revise the draft agree, the draft resolution, specify the terms, and then we'll be clear that we'll vote on it again on Tuesday night in its final form.
Thank you, Dirk, that good clarification. And yeah, we, allow us for the official wordsmithing to occur in resolution.
Motion if, go ahead, Dirk.
No, I, I did have one question, though, has been the use of a term, sustainable marketing fund? And so would you, I, I'd like some guidance on whether we should include that term or whether it should just be tourist marketing? Because I don't know exactly what the definition of that would be, but I know that that term has been used at times. What do you want?
I believe that was, that term evolved, was brought to us by DALLA, if I, if I'm correct. And they termed it for their marketing purposes as a sustainable marketing, which I believe is a, you know, the, in, in reference to the, the, the new technique, the marketing technique and supportive of, of a more sustainable, not, not a fund, but a more sustainable marketing. That's in, in deference to the, you know, a movement that says we've got too much market, too much tourism going on in our, in our state and in our nation in popular places like Durango. And they wanted to insert that term to suggest that it was more of a sustainable to, to our environment, to our economy and so forth. And so I'd like to include that name, that term at their direction, if possible.
So I'll make a motion then, how's that?
Excellent, Kim.
I'd like to make a motion that we give direction to have the draft revised to 55% for sustainable tourism, marketing, and the other words that came after that, that Dirk already had there. 20% for transportation and transit services, equipment and facilities. 11%, whoops, wait a minute, hold on, 14% for arts and cultural events, programs and facilities. And 11% for any of the above purposes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as Dirk has then listed.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Phillips?
Certainly. Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nowsworthy?
No.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Brookie?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes. And with that, there's no other items on our special meeting of Durango City Council this evening. And so with that, I'd like to thank those, those folks that are in attendance this evening. Hopefully you've enjoyed our discussions and hopefully we've arrived at a reasonable compromise with a lot of work from DALLA, the tourism group, the cultural group, all, all parties involved. Like to thank City Manager for bringing us the statistics on our transit system. And he brought us, you know, to yet another problem we need to resolve in the future that councilors will be faced with moving forward. And if there's no further discussion, we can adjourn this meeting.